We call the adjourned meeting in Paramount City Council to order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian? Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Councilmember Almost?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Mayor Hanson?
Here. Public comment updates?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will provide the public comment updates for the last meeting at the February 4th meeting, which will be next Tuesday.
Okay. Public comments?
Yes, sir, we have four public comment cards. Our first comment card is for Mr. Julio Delgado. And he'd like to discuss parking. Mr. Delgado? Mr. Delgado, did you need an interpreter as well?
Yes.
Okay. Here he comes right here. Thank you.
I understand everything and I can speak in English too.
Sure.
I'm mostly English, but I prefer to go.
Whichever you feel comfortable with, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to all of you, members of the city council.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, sir. Sir, you can't be standing there taking pictures. Because it's against the rules of decorum. What was that? Yes, there in the back. Okay.
Unfortunately. He's a boss, clear? A pattern? A pattern, okay. A pattern, okay. That each intent in our community, that demand the rights, and to fight right next to justice, to guarantee the well-being and safety of our community, the politicians doing careers and their authorities, they respond disgrace to our demands. And worst of all, we're resellies. In the latest case that involves me and the complete community in Paramount, that's fighting to eliminate the fines, the providing fines, unjustifiable for parking that imposing in our communities. Workers, immigrant workers. There is a problem that is causing death and physical and psychological damages and the sensitivity of the politicians that today, they control this city council because of the lack of knowledge over sayings, of our language. It continues to contribute to the negligence of our rights and to the abuse of our rights, to the freedom of expression, which is guaranteed in our constitution of the United States. Bad interpretation from the politicians, which also take opportunity to close our movements for adequate parking spaces in our community. And worst of all, a metaphor which is common for our people. It has helped to intend, censor us, and intimidate me. Today, I was at the police station. I was cited by Detective Marcus at 11:30. Well, he didn't come, he was in prison, there was another officer present. He wanted to intimidate me because of the same reason that I'm talking about. Today, I'm here pressing against with this point to this very estimated city councils and members to sign again that the abuse of your power continues making earnings that mean for the politicians and their changes on the parkings. And I think I need more time because we're translating and I think you can give me more time. And also fine unjustified fines to our people. This here is to confirm again that I do know my rights, my constitutional rights that guarantee my freedom of expression. The metaphors that make uncomfortable certain mysterious people. We will continue raising our voices to guarantee that we won't have any more death that it could have been prevented. To guarantee not to suck the blood of our people with unjustified fines for parking. I am sorry for utilizing a different uncomfortable metaphors. We will not keep us silent. We will not stop us. And we will continue even though the resellies, even though until we can conquer or to get to eradicate the abuse of your power for this city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker card, Mr. Mayor, is from Mr. Alejandro Yanez and he'd like to discuss adult recreation. Mr. Yanez?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council, fellow residents, when I started this, happy belated new year, Mayor, Mr. Hoffmeyer, fellow council members. I'm here to respond to a letter that I received from the city of Paramount voted by you, Mr. John Moreno and the former city council assistant, city manager, Kevin Chung. I was sent this letter in regards to comments that I posted on a webpage on Facebook. You know you're from Paramount F. It's a non-city ran webpage. And with that said, I want to quote something that I'm sure you're very, very familiar. "Congress shall not make no law respecting and establishing a religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or of the right of the people to peaceably to assemble and to petition to the government for a redress of grievance." That's the First Amendment. That gives us the right to say what we want to say in public, address who we want to address in public. If we say something that we don't agree with, we have every right to do it, you know? I don't appreciate getting a letter from you, Mr. Moreno, stating that, you know, I'm being intimidated and pretty much telling me I need to shut up. You know? We were attacked and insulted ourselves, Mr. Moreno. You know, for many years now, for the last eight years, I've heard that, you know, handball players are drug dealers and gang bangers. That's an insult. And I directly take that personal. And I've been fighting here, Mr. Moreno, for the last eight years to get our handball courts. You know that, it's not a secret. That's why I come here every year, I've been coming to every meeting and I'm addressing the city council. You know, I'm a proud Paramount resident of 48 years. I'm proud because of the job you've done. And it's not just you alone, it's all of us. We all have to come to these meetings and state what we want and what we're looking for and what we need. If you look around to this parks, Mr. Moreno, 430 in particular, when the lights are off, we have no more recreational sports, Mr. Moreno. I don't know where you live, but where I live, we don't have anything. And that's why I keep pushing the point of getting our handball courts open. Now, Mr. Hoffmeyer, back in November, with all due respect, sir, back in November, you stated that only two people showed up to Roosevelt to play handball courts. And you are right, sir. We don't want to play at those handball courts. They're dilapidated, the courts are brown, so it's hard for us to pick up the ball on a dark brown court. I've stated over and over again why those courts aren't going to be successful for us. Now, if you paid attention on Saturdays or any day of the week, you could go right now, go to Hollydale Park, you'll see 60 or 70 of our residents at Hollydale Park. And I commend you, Ms. Almost, you are the only sitting council member that's ever gone to the handball courts, ever. No mayor, no city manager, no parking recreation director has ever addressed us handball players and said, "How can we help you?" Because you're here to serve us, right? You're here to serve our community. So how come nobody has ever taken the time to come meet with us? I thank you for your time and welcome to our city, our new assistant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glasses.
Mr. Yanez, your glasses. Our next speaker card, Mr. Mayor, is from Ms. Andrea Crowe. She'd like to discuss library programs. Scro?
Good afternoon. Mayor Hanson, councilmembers in the city of Paramount. We have a number of great events coming up at Paramount Library. On Friday, January 31st at 10:30, we're hosting Smarty Pants Storytime. Toddlers and their caregivers will enjoy books, songs, rhymes, and movements while learning school readiness skills and having fun. On Saturday, February 1st at 1:00 PM, adults are invited to learn how to have fun with their smartphone. Attendees will learn how to use their smartphone to improve their life and feel digitally empowered. And on February 4th at 4:00 PM, our Teen Tuesday event invites teens ages 12 to 18 to celebrate Black History Month by playing trivia. Teens contest their knowledge and learn new facts. Refreshments will be served. Learn more about these and other great programs at LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker card, Mr. Mayor, is from Ms. Sonia De León and she'd like to discuss freedom of speech. Ms. De León?
Good evening, buenas tardes. Estoy aquí presente para dar la queja que en este concejal no se da la oportunidad de que uno hable. Here in the city council, we don't have the opportunity to speak. I, as a public citizen, represent myself. And if I'm a board member, I do that when I'm at board meetings or when I'm there to represent the school board. I, right now, represent myself and as a person in this city, I have the right for freedom of speech. Yet, I asked and I addressed an email to Mr. John Moreno to see why the city wrote a letter through this law firm and basically was suing or trying to defame my name and saying stuff that I didn't do, but thankfully, we have attorneys that help us. So estoy aquí para la gente que necesita ayuda, estamos organizándonos. No los van a dejar que nos callen por más demandas que pongan, tenemos abogados para ayudar a la comunidad. We have attorneys to help those citizens because there are a lot of things that are illegal that are happening, but you're just waiting for a lawsuit to happen. And obviously, people can't express themselves because now you have people in the back and I'm hearing comments openly, or I could hear them saying, "Oh, watch him, yeah, he's saying something about going and get the camera or something." You don't do that. We are taxpayers, we have the freedom of speech. There's already been a lawsuit for people not allowing to be able to clap. And maybe this is the next place that needs a lawsuit. We need people that are going to be up there to represent the community, whether you like what they say or not. Estamos para que nos escuchen porque nosotros somos la comunidad. Ustedes los eligieron para representarnos, no para quedarse allí y ganando cantidades grandes de personas para que ellos representen las compañías y no los representan a nosotros. I haven't heard any one of this city council people ever asking, except for Ms. Guian, for some kind of funds for air quality filters for students. I haven't heard anyone. I need someone that will represent this community so our students could breathe healthier, our teachers could breathe healthier. And it has not happened, but we are pushing along with Ms. Guian and we need to get more people like Ms. Guian. So, thank you.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, our last speaker's card is from Mr. Jose De León.
Okay.
Mr. De León?
Good evening to city council, administration, public. I'm here to remind you, and just for the record, that since October, the monitors readings are going up. And I know you guys don't care and some of you are about to leave. But it's important for the community to know that we still have the problem. For example, on October 23rd, monitor 11 shows up 3.25, 2.78, it was on December 23rd, I think, and also on January. The numbers keeps going on. I know it's been low like the last few months, but since October, about most of the monitors are about 70% higher than normal. Estoy sorprendido de ver las tácticas de intimidación por parte de ustedes, bueno esto no es nada nuevo. Me recuerda algunos países de Latinoamérica. Yo recuerdo que siempre decían el sistema democrático de Estados Unidos es lo más perfecto del mundo. Pero cuando uno viene acá se da cuenta que es la misma cosa. Vean concejales con más de 20 años en el poder. Esto es como ser uno dictador o concejales que son seleccionados a dedo. Esas prácticas eran bien comunes del partido revolucionario institucional en México que ellos solo escogían, "Oh, es tu turno, es tu turno." ¿Qué clase de sistema democrático es este? Intimidar a nuestros residentes. Nosotros pagamos impuestos, todos. Algunos más que otros. Y ni aún así nos respetan. He estado caminando las calles y me he encontrado con algunos residentes que me dicen que no vienen aquí a los meetings porque nadie habla español. ¿Qué es eso? Más del 80% de latinos. ¿Dónde está la representación? ¿Qué clase de sistema democrático es este? Necesitamos cambiar algunas cosas. Por favor, si pueden poner en la agenda que la agenda que se publica acá tiene que estar en español. Muchas ciudades ya la tienen. Debía estar un traductor aquí. Por eso mucha gente siente temor de venir a expresarles sus inquietudes. Hagamos algo al respecto. Gracias.
Okay.
That was the last one? Yep, yes, sir.
Have there been spikes done or is that what he's talking about?
Back in October and December. That we reported back to.
What about January? About January also?
I haven't seen any, but we can, we'll look into that. There was one that was above one, I believe, in January, so, but I don't know the exact number of numbers, that's something we checked.
I'd like to address something too. Recently, we've had some air quality issues in a certain area and what I will say, you know, when it's black, I'm going to call it black, call the kettle black when it needs to be, but I will say this. We do have somebody checking monitors, phone calls have been made to the AQMD. And when I smell the air, I call AQMD. And we need not let the community be worn down, we need to keep calling. And John Moreno, you know, in the past is the past or what have you, I'm not saying anything, but what I am going to say is, when I said, "Hey, something's going on, call AQMD right now, send code enforcement out there right now." We have made progress with the air quality, do we have a long way to go? Absolutely. I'm not sitting up here trying to praise what anybody has done, but I just have to make it clear on the record, it's baby steps, it's not going to happen overnight. We can do more, because I'd like to see grants for air filters, but we are making big strides, believe it or not. And like I said, I'm not stating one way or the other, I'm just saying, we are getting things done. Might not be at the speed we need to, but to sit here and remain silent and act like no one's doing anything is just not right. And I will say, when they're not doing it, I'm going to call it that way, but we are doing it.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar. But before we take a motion on the consent calendar, I'd like to have a short little staff report on this, if we could.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Our finance director, Karina Lamb, will handle this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The item before you is the water shut-off policy effective February 1st, 2020. Senate Bill 998 applies to water agencies that have more than 200 connections and Paramount is one of them. It requires the agency to adopt a written policy on discontinuation of residential water accounts and to prohibit shut-off until the bill has been delinquent for more than 60 days. In addition, the water agency is required to post the new shut-off policy on city's website and in multiple languages. Furthermore, the water agency is allowed to update the fee schedule if applicable and to report the number of shut-offs to the state Water Resources Control.
Yeah, we have no monitors here.
Hey Danny, can you see if you can flick a switch maybe, hopefully the council member monitors are not?
Well, there's two that are on here.
Oh, two are on this side, Danny, these two, but the N3 are not on. Hey Heidi, do you have them? No, so it looks like that whole bank over there on that side. Thanks, guys. We'll get it fixed right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Can I continue?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'll start on the second slide. So furthermore, the water agency is allowed to update the fee schedule if applicable and to report the number of shut-offs to the state Water Resources Control Board and on city's website. Currently, our policy states that payment can be made within 21 days after the billing date. On day 22, past due notice is mailed. For accounts that are delinquent more than 34 days, an $8 delinquent fee is assessed. Shut-off hangers are delivered on day 42. Shut-off will be on schedule then and $30 reconnection fee will be assessed. Now, the updated Senate Bill 998 policy extends the discontinuation of service from day 42 to 60 days after the past due day, that is day 81. Customers from low-income families can enter into payment plans before the shut-off. This is our practice already, this is not something new, we have been doing that. While Prop 42 does not allow us to waive fees, we are accommodating as far as making payment plans with our customers. It has always been our practice. In addition, Senate Bill 998 requires no less than 10 business days prior to shut-off. Final disconnection notice, including the shut-off policy, will be delivered to account owners and service location if they have different addresses. We plan to do that and in good faith efforts and follow-up will also be made a few days before shut-off. Senate Bill 998 caps the reconnection fee to $50 for low-income families only. Paramount fee is at $30 and we have no plan to change it at this time. Just for your information, some agencies charge as high as $75 for reconnection, ours at $30. We feel that we have already been doing or even more lenient than this policy requires. Other than extending shut-off from day 42 to day 81, we're not doing anything different. Not only our water rates are the lowest amount all water agencies in the region, we have been flexible in terms of accommodating, in terms of making payment plans, we've been accommodating to our customers' needs. And while Prop 42 does not allow us to waive fees, we are accommodating to our customers in terms of their payment dates. And I do want to say that the extension of the payment due day, however, does have a fiscal impact because cash flow will be somewhat impacted as payment may not be made until day 81 for certain accounts. With that, it's recommended the council adopt the new water shut-off policy. We have to answer any questions you may have.
Now we have monitors, okay. Any questions?
I do, I have one. So, all in all, it will provide a little more extension time at a payment plan?
The payment plan's already in place. The only thing changed really is extending the shut-off from day 42 to day 81.
Okay, thank you, I like that.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Do the notices that go out, are they bilingual?
Yes, in fact, it will be translated in five different languages.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Spanish one of them.
What's the other four? What was the other four?
Oh, it's Tagala, Korean, and Chinese.
Anything else? Okay, motion would be in order.
Move the item?
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Almost to approve the consent calendar. I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Almost?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All business, vision, mission, values, strategic outcomes, a staff report, please.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, let's see if we can get this, there you go, it's working now. Over the last six months, we've been working with a specialized consultant, as you know, to deliver the city's first ever vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes. And in order to do this, we created a process that we felt was very inclusive and involved a wide range of folks. We considered the input given to us by the community in the survey that was conducted back in May of 2019. There were numerous sessions with management staff, select employees, as well as council members. We then presented, if you recall, a comprehensive draft of a document to the city council at a Saturday morning workshop that occurred in November of 2019 where some community members were also present. The city council and the community members present, they gave some valuable suggestions. And then lastly, we solicited input from all the employees through individual department workshops and that occurred last month. So the draft before you tonight includes all the input that I discussed. And again, the idea of this was not a top-down type of exercise. We engaged a number of people in the process, I just wanted to make that part clear with this. So, as far as the purpose, what is the purpose of having a vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes? Well, the purpose is a number of reasons. Number one, it definitely sets the standard for the community and the organization. Next, it establishes priorities, uniformity, and guidelines. And that will help us to set the direction for policy decision-making. And lastly, it provides the community with an understanding and a level of confidence in the government's character and direction. So, for example, when, if this city council and future city council review the budget as we do each year, they can look to these principles for directions. And similarly, management and commissions can keep these principles in mind when making recommendations to you as a council. Additionally, the vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes will impact our organization in another way. By having clear direction about the characteristics and duties of our organization, we'll have the ability to attract and retain, we feel, a higher caliber of employee that in turns better serves our community. Now, with that, we're going to go over each component of the vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes. The first one is our vision. And an organization vision, it really answers the question, what is the desired outcome of your organization? So here is the city's proposed vision for Paramount. A city that is safe, healthy, and attractive. Plain and simple, but it speaks to who we are and what we are. The next is our mission. An organization mission answers that question, what is the purpose of our organization? A lot of organizations commonly refer to that as your mission statement. So here is Paramount's mission. Dedicated to providing fiscally responsible services that maintain a vibrant community. Next, our values. An organization's values answers a question, what are the guiding beliefs and principles of our organization? In other words, it tells people who we are as an organization. So here is Paramount's proposed values. What do we value? We value respectful and ethical behavior, service excellence, responsiveness, accountability, and professionalism, innovation and creativity, teamwork and collaboration, effective, inclusive, and transparent public information and engagement. Lastly, we have a full set of what are called strategic outcomes. An organization's strategic outcome provides a pathway to the vision. So if you recall from a few slides ago that I showed you, our vision is a city that is safe, healthy, and attractive. So our strategic outcomes help us to achieve that vision, okay? So it's kind of more of a narrowed down thing. So here is Paramount's strategic outcomes. There's a number of them. The first one is safe community. Provide a safe place to live, work, and visit. Number two is community health. Provide diverse recreational and cultural amenities that support healthy lifestyles and a sense of community. Number three is economic health. Support a healthy, sustainable- Support a healthy, sustainable economy reflecting community, the community values, excuse me. Continuing on, number four, environmental health. Promote, protect, and enhance a healthy and sustainably built and natural environment. Number five, attractive and well-maintained infrastructure. Develop and maintain city-owned infrastructure, parks, facilities, and amenities that enhance the quality of life and attractiveness of the community. And lastly, efficient, effective, and fiscally responsible. Deliver an efficient and effective city government in a fiscally responsible, transparent, and collaborative manner. So as far as the next steps are concerned, if the city council approves the vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes, we will publicize these principles to the public. We will also showcase these principles through a variety of means such as our city letterhead, our website, and on recruitment materials. And with that, it's recommended that the city council adopt the vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes for the city of Paramount, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
And moved by Lemmons, checked by Hoffmeyer, to adopt the vision, mission, values, and strategic outcomes for the city of Paramount as outlined in the report. We have roll call please.
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Almost?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Item three, a report, 2019 law enforcement and public safety report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, tonight we have a tag-team style report. We did actually do this for you last year, these two items. The first presenter before you will be Captain Dave Springall of the Lakewood Station, and he will review crime statistics compared 2019 with the previous year. And then after Captain Springall gives his presentation, then we'll also have a presentation by our deputy district attorney, Kelly Tatman, and Ms. Tatman will review legislation, recent legislation and past legislation, and how that affects our crime rate. So with that, I'll turn it over first to Captain Dave Springall of the Lakewood Sheriff Station. Dave?
Good evening and thank you Mayor Hanson, fellow council members, City Manager Moreno for having me here tonight, as I provide a brief end-of-the-year review on public safety. On behalf of Sheriff, the sheriff, Alex Villanueva, the department, and your great deputy and professional staff proudly serving the city of Paramount, I am truly humbled to represent my personnel in addressing you this evening. Working regularly in partnership with council, City Manager Moreno, and the entire public safety team reminds me of how lucky we are as a station family to serve a city who supports and appreciates the efforts of my personnel while setting a high standard and expectation for service within the city of Paramount. For the continued partnership we share, I thank each of you. In my presentation, I will be referring to Part One crimes, which include violent crimes consisting of murder, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault, along with the property crimes to include burglary, grand theft auto, larceny, and arson. Tonight I will be sharing about successes we enjoyed this past year as it pertains to public safety. But I must remind everyone who hears this message, success does not come easy or free, and our stationship leadership, or our station leadership, along with your public safety team managed by Adriana Lopez, along with City Manager John Moreno and supported by council, has worked tirelessly this year to ensure the city was a safe place to enjoy, both for the community calling Paramount home and its visitors. 2019 saw an overall decrease in Part One crime of nine percent. This included a drop in property crime of thirteen percent, combined with a slight increase of five percent in crimes against persons. The five percent increase in crimes against person was impacted in the following breakdown. Homicides increased by one in 2019, from three in 2018 to four this year. Violent crime of any type is never a good thing, but of these incidents, which included an incident of robbery, a drug ripoff, an assault, and a workplace violence incident, each of the suspects involved are in custody with cases filed. I am pleased to share we saw a reduction in rape this past year. Assaults showed a slight increase of two percent. Assaults are counted by victims, not incidents, and last year showed an overall increase of four victims. During 2019, there were twenty-two incidents involving multiple victims, to include one incident of six victims. These types of incidents can quickly drive the number and percentages up as it pertains to assault. One such assault occurred on one of our station deputies, Deputy Dakota Polonka, which will be discussed later in the presentation by District Attorney Kelly Tatman. I am pleased to say Dakota continues to improve through prayers and love from many, and yesterday while visiting with her, Deputy Polonka and I talked and laughed, which included her giving me a hard time and some jabs to the arm. Her strength, heart, and commitment continue to drive her recovery, and we're all thankful for that. Robbery was the area which gave us the most grief. We saw an increase of ten percent in 2019, which was an increase of fourteen by number from 2018. Robbery is defined as the taking of property by means of force or fear. We saw a number of different types of robberies last year which impacted these numbers. One such type is an estes robbery, which is a petty theft where loss prevention or other employees attempt to stop a suspect, and in return, the suspect assaults or flees with the stolen property by the means of force or fear. This kind of robbery often occurs at large businesses such as Walmart and Home Depot, who employ loss prevention officers in an attempt to reduce theft from their businesses. This type of robbery occurred on a number of occasions. Other types of robberies we saw included thefts of iPhones or chain snatches, and during different types of purchase exchanges such as order-up, offer-up. We worked tirelessly to positively impact those areas of crime, for which we were able to make a number of arrests and/or identifications of suspects wanted for robbery within the city. Success in these types of investigation often require a cooperative victim, for which we encourage the community, if you are a victim of a crime, get a good look at the person stealing from you so you may be able to identify them later with detectives, and assist by going to court when summoned. A great example of an arrest of robbery suspects occurred last night. CVS was robbed at gunpoint last night, just after the robbery. Deputies located the suspects as they fled in their vehicle, and after a short pursuit, arrested two armed suspects while recovering a large sum of cash stolen during the incident. Deputies from Paramount, Lakewood, Bellflower, and Artesia, all assigned out of Lakewood Station, assisted in this arrest and investigation. And this arrest will lead to a number of close cases for which there's been a large series pattern of robberies to those types of facilities and locations. Some of the problems we continue to face in providing public safety can be linked to Propositions 47, 57, and Assembly Bill 109, which have caused crimes to be reduced, individuals to serve lessened sentences, or be released with less monitoring post-conviction. I am pleased to share property crime saw a thirteen percent decrease overall, with a twelve percent reduction in burglary, an eleven percent drop in theft, and a seventeen percent drop in grand theft auto, as well as arson. This year, the city of Paramount enjoyed the lowest crime numbers in the city since There are a lot of things that go into such success. I would reiterate my belief, crime was impacted and continues to improve through the commitment of council, the public safety team, and city manager partnering with our personnel and prioritizing public safety. I appreciate the resources and leadership provided by the city as we work to make Paramount safer together. I must recognize my personnel as well, as a number of dedicated deputies who had previously worked in the city promoted to the position of field training officer this past year. Their experience led to the development of younger personnel's understanding and being able to address the needs of the city, to include proactive enforcement. This enforcement led to an increase in arrests from one thousand five hundred and fifteen arrests in 2018 to one thousand eight hundred ninety-three arrests in 2019, an increase of approximately twenty percent. This proactive policing had a positive impact in public safety throughout the city. We cannot talk about public safety without talking about traffic enforcement. The city focused a number of resources towards traffic safety. These resources included the use of motorcycle patrol from our department. Through dedicated focus and enforcement of not only the motor units, but proactive work through our field deputies, the city saw a thirteen percent decrease in traffic collisions, with the number of fatal traffic collisions also going down. And speaking of traffic, I must mention an area of concern and frustration. Street racing and intersection takeovers have become a dangerous and deadly problem throughout Los Angeles, Orange, and Riverside Counties. Lakewood Station's patrol areas are no different. I am thankful for the efforts the city of Paramount has afforded us in proactive efforts to combine, combat this problem. We will continue to fight the good fight in combating the issue, utilizing every resource available to us, to include other local and state agencies who we can continue to partner with regularly. Our goals are straightforward. Continue to build relationships in the community while partnering to proactively impact crime and make a difference in people's lives. Before I pass off the presentation to Deputy District Attorney Kelly Tatman, I would like to thank Mayor Hanson, council members, City Manager John Moreno, and the entire public safety team for their continued leadership, partnership, and support in providing your Paramount deputy personnel with the necessary resources to best serve the city of Paramount. May we each continue to adapt and overcome the new and ever-changing challenges which confront us, and may God bless us always. I will be available for questions at the conclusion of the safety presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, as, as DA Tatman's coming up, I just wanted to share something with you on this slide, going back to this real quick. The yellow lines, just in case you were wondering, that's the population of the city, just in case you were wondering. And back, so back in 1972, the population was at thirty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four, and as of the 2010 census, it's at fifty-four thousand. The rough estimate we're at is actually at fifty-six thousand, so again, just a testament to the job that the Sheriff's Department and public safety is to bring crime down when your population is almost double the amount that you had back then.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Evening.
I'd like to start my presentation by saying that this presentation is not an endorsement by the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, but is a presentation presented by myself, a prosecutor who's worked the last twenty years in Los Angeles County. This November, a new public safety initiative will be on the ballot. Why is this initiative so important? The only way to understand is to go back in time and learn the history behind its evolution. On President's Day 2017, I received a text from my husband. He was working as the watch commander that day for the Whittier Police Department. The text read, "I want you to know that I'm okay, but two of our guys are not. I'll call you when I can." Whittier Police Officer Keith Boyer was murdered in the line of duty by a gang member and a career criminal. Fellow police officer Patrick Hazel was severely injured, and his law enforcement career ended by the suspect that day. Just hours before the killing of Officer Boyer, this suspect also murdered his cousin in another senseless act of violence. These sad, tragic, and unspeakable events of President's Day 2017 impacted forever Officer Boyer and Officer Hazel's lives, their family and friends' lives, and his police colleagues will never be the same. This cop killer, this repeat offender, this violent offender, never should have been out on the streets that day. Why was he? The suspect was on parole and had been arrested five times in the seven months prior to Officer Boyer's killing. But he was never sent back to prison because of Assembly Bill 109. Many law enforcement officials point to this legislation, as well as new laws, specifically AB 109 signed into law in 2011 by then-Governor Jerry Brown, and Propositions 47 and 57 passed into law by voters in November 2014 and 2016. They allowed dangerous criminals to go unchecked, for the homeless population to explode, and the victims of crime to go unnoticed. These laws have created a public safety nightmare. The criminal justice system was premised upon three concepts: rehabilitation, punishment, and deterrence. Pretty simple, right? The framework most of us grew up with at home, and the basic principles behind maintaining a civilized society. Today, punishment and deterrence is all but gone thanks to AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57. How did we get here? In May 2011, the United States Supreme Court ruled that California must release more than thirty thousand inmates to reduce California's prison population down to a reasonable and constitutional level. The court stated that the conditions in our prisons, particularly for mentally ill inmates, violated the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution's prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment. Why? Because there were, there was overcrowding. There was also a fifty-four percent vacancy rate for psychiatrists, as well as a backlog of up to seven hundred prisoners waiting to see a doctor for physical care. So instead of building more prisons to accommodate for population growth in this state, and in lieu of hiring more physicians for those inmates to be seen and treated, Governor Brown and the legislation passed AB 109. AB 109 was introduced as the California Public Safety Realignment Act of 2011, aptly named because it basically realigned criminals to the streets instead of prison. AB 109 accomplished the following. It allowed nonviolent, non-serious, non-sex offenders, after they are released from prison, to be supervised at the local county level. In layman's terms, by local county probation officers rather than state parole officers. Two, it reclassified the way the state looked at approximately five hundred crimes, effectively eliminating actual state prison time, and instead redirected certain crime offenders to serve their prison time in county jail. Three, AB 109 based parole from state prisons solely on the offender's commitment offense resulting in the release of inmates that had serious and violent histories. AB 109 instantly became law without any training of local probation officers, no immediate funding to local probation, and no plan or guideline to handle the release of close to thirty thousand inmates. What was the result of this legislation? Realignment without any serious or responsible plan for supporting felons released from custody, and a mass influx of inmates to the local, already crowded county jail system. And if this weren't bad enough, in 2014, voters in the November 2014 election approved Prop 47. Interestingly, the proposition was named the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act. However, Prop 47 had nothing to do with safe neighborhoods and schools, and everything to do with eliminating any incentive for drug addicts and the mentally ill to stick with court-mandated drug treatment and mental health programs, because it allowed drug possession and theft offenses to be reduced from felonies to misdemeanors, and eliminated mandatory DNA testing for those previously defined offenses. Prop 47 essentially decriminalized property crimes and released criminals from custody. The courts were now powerless to incentivize individuals who suffered from drug addiction and mental illness to go into treatment or into facilities to address their addiction and mental health issues. The result? A substantial increase in the homeless population and a revolving door of arrests, cite, released back to the streets. The result of reducing the punishment for drug possession and theft took away the punishment and consequence of a state prison sentence. In the past, many defendants would choose to enter treatment- In the past, many defendants would choose to enter treatment to avoid such a fate. The incentive to go into treatment for addiction and/or mental health issues was overwhelming because a person's past felony convictions were used to increase potential custody or prison time. The threat of being saddled with a felony conviction and a lengthy prison sentence worked as a deterrent as well. A recent tragedy in Paramount highlights the failure of this particular law. On November 25, 2019, Deputy Dakota Palanca responded to a call of an individual acting erratically in a Paramount shopping center. When she encountered the suspect, she was assaulted, and the suspect fled. She pursued the suspect on foot, and during that chase, was hit and severely injured by a driver who was suspected of being under the influence. Who was this erratic individual she contacted and pursued? This particular defendant had turned 18 in 2012. Since 2012, he had been arrested over 50 times. Since AB 109 and Prop 47 went into effect, he had two felony convictions and 28 misdemeanor convictions. In 2018 alone, he had 11 misdemeanor convictions, and in 2019, six. The majority of these misdemeanor convictions were for drug possession and/or drug-related offenses. Without Prop 47, most charges would have been felonies with the offer of drug treatment in lieu of state prison. Most disturbingly, he walked out of custody and court on his most recent drug possession case, six days before his encounter with Deputy Palanca. More fallout from Prop 47 included the reduction of most theft crimes to misdemeanors. Today, if a suspect steals anything that is less than $950 in value, the crime is a misdemeanor. There is no limit on how many misdemeanor petty theft cases a suspect can acquire before it turns into a felony, because it doesn't happen anymore. The offenses will continue to be charged as misdemeanors if the suspect picks up one or 20. The deterrence of progressive punishment has been all but eliminated. Business owners and citizens have simply stopped calling law enforcement to report these crimes. They know the defendants aren't going to be punished. The suspect will essentially be slapped on the wrist and verbally reprimanded to not do it again. And what about the impact of theft to small businesses? This has resulted in the loss of billions of dollars, as well as businesses closing and laying off employees to account for these losses. The effect of crimes on private citizens is heartbreaking. There is nothing about theft crimes that is petty to them. What happens when a law-abiding citizen has their car stolen or broken into and items taken? If that car or the loss is worth less than the felony threshold of $950, the case is a misdemeanor petty theft. Who pays for the victims' out-of-pocket losses? What is the effect on their insurance rates? How did they find the funds to purchase a new vehicle or replace the items stolen, like their laptops, work phones, work tools? How did they get to work now? How did they pick up their kids? How did they get their kids and themselves to the doctor? The answer is Prop 47 doesn't care about these victims of crime. Victims have been forgotten, discarded, and completely eliminated from thought. Lastly, Prop 47 eliminated DNA collection and a slew of crimes. DNA is one of the most important investigative tools assisting law enforcement in identifying perpetrators in unsolved cases. Hence, bringing justice to long-suffering victims when DNA connecting a suspect to a crime is often the missing link, or the missing key piece of evidence, especially in sexual assault cases. Prop 47 did not create any benefit to society and public safety. It only benefited drug addicts and thieves. We now have a significant number of mentally ill and drug-addicted people out on the street with no way of forcing them to receive help. The focus of new laws should have been on helping those people acclimate back into society and choose a different path in their life. These new laws just dump them back out on the street, although they will be going about doing what they've always done. Right on the heels of 47 came Prop 57, and the name of this one was Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act. Prop 57 was advertised to gain the public trust by claiming that those persons convicted of nonviolent crimes could be eligible for early release, hence another tool to reduce the prison population, an appeal to the public's sensitivity regarding nonviolent offenders. Problem with Prop 47 is twofold. First, it classified violent crimes as only those listed in Penal Code Section 667.5. Those crimes include murder, robbery, rape, just to name a few. Prop 47 labeled all other crimes not listed in that Penal Code section as nonviolent, but were definitely violent in nature. For example, those crimes that Prop 57 does not deem violent are rape by intoxication, rape of an unconscious person, human trafficking involving sex acts with minors, drive-by shootings, certain assaults, attempting to explode a bomb at a school or a hospital, domestic violence involving trauma, hate crimes, failing to register as a sex offender, and lewd acts against a child 14 or 15 years of age, false imprisonment of an elder through violence, and the list goes on. So when does an inmate convicted of one of those nonviolent offenses become eligible for early release from prison? An inmate could be eligible for early release when their time for their primary offense has been served, notwithstanding any other prior convictions or conduct enhancements they were found guilty of and sentenced to. So what does that mean? Let me give you an example. Let's say there's an inmate currently serving a 16-year prison sentence for a crime deemed nonviolent by statute. And let's just call this primary offense "human trafficking of a child for sex." The inmate was sentenced to eight years for that offense, but then the sentence was doubled due to a prior felony conviction for a violent or serious prior, like robbery. So you have someone convicted of human trafficking of a child for sex, and they had previously been convicted of robbery. Under Prop 47, that inmate becomes eligible for early release after serving 80 percent of eight years, or six years and four months. The prior conviction and the time for it are ignored. In the past, that particular inmate would have served 16 years in state prison. The other problem with Prop 47 is it gave the power of early release to regular, non-law enforcement citizens employed on the parole board, gave them the power to determine who would be released from prison early. Prop 57 also eliminated all the crime victim protections granted by Marcy's Law, which gives victims of crime a voice in the decision-making of parole. The following cases illustrate AB 109, Prop 47, and 57's failures. In 2016, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Deputy Steve Owen was responding to a burglary call. Upon arrival, he came across the suspect, who first shot and wounded him, and then stood over him and fired four more bullets into his body in what has been called an execution. The suspect was just 27 years old at the time, but had a lengthy rap sheet that included 12 arrests, two state prison sentences, and he was on parole at the time for armed robbery of a USC Community Safety Officer. That same year, Palm Springs Police Officer Jose Gilbert Vega, a 35-year veteran of the department, two months away from retirement, and Leslie Zarebny, mother of a four-month-old who had just returned from maternity leave, were gunned down while responding to a domestic disturbance call. They were ambushed by the suspect, a gang member who had just spent 18 months in state prison after being convicted of assault with a deadly weapon. He was also currently on parole. So what can we do? A very, very small step is to pass the November Initiative, called the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act. What does this new initiative do? Well, it expands the list of violent crimes for which early release, as defined by Prop 47, is not an option. It reinstates DNA collection for certain crimes that were reduced to misdemeanors as part of Prop 47. Just as a side note, since Prop 47 passed, cold case hits dropped over 2,000, with more than 450 of the hits they did receive connected suspects to violent crimes. This new initiative also revises the theft threshold by adding a felony for serial theft, meaning a third violation for theft could be charged as a felony, and the threshold amount for that third offense would only be $250. Fourth, it requires a Board of Parole hearings to consider an inmate's entire criminal history when deciding parole, not just that commitment offense, and requires a mandatory hearing for a parolee that has violated his or her parole for the third time to decide if revocation of parole is necessary to ensure public safety. AB 109 allows parolees, such as Officer Boyer's killer, to repeatedly violate the terms of their parole and face few consequences and allow them to roam rampant on the street. This new initiative would stop that. Also, it gives victims of crime reasonable notice of the inmates released, and the right to submit a confidential statement to the Board of Parole. These problems will not be solved legislatively. We cannot count on our legislature to fix this problem. Over the last few years, 13 bills have been introduced in Sacramento to reclassify these so-called nonviolent crimes, such as pimping a child, murder-for-hire, rape of an unconscious person. The legislature has rejected them all. This initiative is just a very small step in fixing the injustices of the last few years.
Have you hit the button, Dave? There you go.
Questions?
I just have one. Can you go back to the screen that showed where the population and what our crime rate is currently?
Sure.
It was the one with the bar graphs?
All the lines?
Yeah, with all the lines.
There.
For this one. So you know what? We often hear from residents that we don't have enough, and this is like for public safety, our current, that we don't have enough police officers on the streets patrolling our city, okay? That we need more, we need more. So is this a way to justify that we have enough staff protecting our residents when we're looking at bar graphs like this?
Do I think it's enough to justify? I don't think the way crime is impacting the communities now, I don't think there's ever a comfortable amount of officers. We've found that violent crime, especially against our officers, has increased steadily over the last several years. Deputies are constantly challenged. We work very closely with City Manager Moreno and Adriana with regard to our staffing to ensure that we're providing as much service to the community as we can, oftentimes hiring overtime to attack certain crime trends. So I think we've been, I think obviously there's always the thought that we kind of got lucky at times, we'll ride the wave while it's good. Crime is down. I do think a lot of it has to do with the partnership, community awareness, community involvement, and proactive policing that our deputies are currently doing, but I don't think there's ever enough, and I don't think it justifies having enough on the street, but costs, budgets, and everything. The City Manager Moreno and Adriana work constantly to ensure we're deploying our deputies as effectively as we can, and we work together constantly to try to maintain that. But I'm not convinced that this is a hard sell, because you have one critical incident where you have 15 people that are injured, and all of a sudden your crime trend's going to creep up as evidenced by assault.
It's also not a hard sell, because in the previous presentation, it says crime stats could be, crimes are not being reported because of Prop 47, 57, I think it was said. People are like, why even call if this person's going to be released? And you just see a lot of people reluctant to call the police as well. So as far as I'm concerned with the buy-in for, you know, obviously, I agree with the new legislation to fix 47, 57, and AB 109, but you need community buy-in when you want to sell something like that, and I just think we have, we just have to work on the bridge between our police here and our community to encourage them to report crime, even though, you know, Prop 47 and 57, and then go that extra little step where if there's men in black hoodies and orange ski masks, and you got them on film, you got them on cameras, to go that extra mile and show that concern, do some extra patrol without having to beg for it. So if we really want community buy-in on all of this, we got to take that extra step, too. So while I appreciate our crime stats, and the bottom line is, when you live in Paramount, you still fear crime, and it's about perception, and there's still a lot of crime going on. And I just think we need to serve our community and take that extra step for quality of life issues, you know? That's scary to some people, black hoodies and orange ski masks. I'd be scared. I'd like a knock on my door and say, hey, we're giving you extra patrol because of this. Little things like that, I think, go a long way. That's all.
Further questions? No?
No, I just want to, let me say one thing. I think I've been doing this on the City Council for 17 years, and the Sheriff's Department, as far as I'm concerned, in the City of Paramount, we've been just tremendously blessed with what you people have done. We've had great people on the street, we've had great lieutenants that have become captains, and I just want to commend you for the job that you're doing, you and your deputies are doing.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it, and again, I just reiterate that truly a partnership. We meet regularly with the City Manager, or the Public Safety Department, and appreciate the support of council. And then, again, as you said, I'm very blessed to have tremendous people working with me, alongside me, at the station, because you do have some of the finest deputies in the county working for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you both. Appreciate it. Okay, item number four, 2019 Resident Satisfaction Survey Report. Staff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this is on something else that we do every year. We present to you the 2019 results of a daily satisfaction survey that we do for our Public Safety Services. The results are very positive, as we have seen in the previous years. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, to handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Before Kelly and our Captain leave, I do want to say thank you for everything that they do. Like they mentioned, it is a partnership. Having Kelly on board is great. She explains all these legislations to me, because she's the attorney and I'm not, so she's able to explain that to me in a way that I understand some of our stats. So thank you, Kelly.
And Captain.
So like John mentioned, this is an item that comes before you on an annual basis. This is our Public Safety and Sheriff's Service Follow-Ups, and this is conducted on a daily basis, and I'll kind of go over how this all started. Since 1997, our Public Safety staff starts, or started collecting, survey of routine calls for service, and also to try to determine the level of quality of service that we're providing to our residents. The survey that we collect is used to create a report that we refer to, to the Line of Duty Report. Each day, our Public Safety staff conducts four Quality Assurance phone calls from the previous day. We select two for the day shift or afternoon shift. Two calls are selected for the PM or evening shift. The calls are randomly selected to make sure that they're consistent, and we do not select calls of people that have placed a call for service that are sensitive in nature. Those would be calls that would include rape, assault, or any type of situation where somebody was a victim of a homicide. Obviously, it would be inappropriate for us to call these people. We also call people who have placed calls for service for what we refer to as routine calls for service, and that would be like petty theft, burglary, vandalism. calls for service, and that would be like petty theft, burglary, vandalism. As mentioned before, the calls that we place are scripted for consistency, and staff asked a total of five questions. We are asked, or they actually ask the person who placed the call for service to provide feedback on the following areas: their interaction with dispatch, the response time, the handling deputy, or the committee service officer who assisted them. The last question is whether they were provided a citizen's satisfaction form. The first four questions, the responses are limited to very satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, or indifferent. And then the last question is just a yes or no answer. As I mentioned before, this is a sample of the report that we create on a daily basis. As you can tell, we did white out the name of the person who placed the call for service, and then we have a general location, the type of call, and their feedback to the four questions that they were asked. And on the last area where it says comment, if they provide additional information, then we enter it at that point. This is a sample of our resident satisfaction form. As you could see, this includes the file number, the date, and also was it a deputy or a CSO who responded to the call? So in summary, these are our ratings for 2019. As you can tell, the majority of our feedback falls under the category of satisfied, and then after that, we have very satisfied with almost a little bit under 25%. 98% of the people that are involved in this survey were either satisfied or very satisfied with our overall service. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I do, well, I guess it is kind of a question and a comment. I know that this particular program was one that we actually won the All-America Cities Award for back in 1988. It was one of three programs, and back then it was considered extremely innovative. And so my question is, is the sheriff using that in other cities now? Are other people, you know, doing these kind of surveys? I know we've been doing it since the 80s.
That I'm aware of, they don't. The good thing about our satisfaction survey is that it does include deputies and CSOs, so we just randomly select the cause, and it could be a deputy, or it could be a CSO. If it involves a deputy, our procedure is to hand it over to law enforcement.
And I will have the captain address that question for the sheriff's department overall.
At Lakewood Station, we regularly do phone audits of calls for service. We also do follow-up audits with our, with the people in the community that we dispatch calls for service to. We do those regularly on every shift by our watch deputies. It's a more, the, we've always done field audits, fallen up on our patrol work, trying to get a couple per deputy as far as service, but to establish a more consistent performance log, we're doing it regularly with multiple calls on each shift to regularly randomly audit our calls for service to see where we stand on that.
Do you hand out the citizen satisfaction surveys, though, in other communities to all the residents that are served?
We do not hand out things, no ma'am. But our sergeants are the ones, sergeants follow up due to a number of calls for service to follow up with.
Thank you.
Further questions? Done? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, request for installation of a disabled parking zone at 16614 Eureka Avenue. Staff report?
Yes, sir. Our latest handicap parking request, as you mentioned, comes to us from Eureka Avenue. Our staff conducted a normal evaluation of this request and also had a hearing at a recent Public Works Commission meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Director of Public Works, Sarah Ho, as our Public Works Director is out with the flu. We have a couple of employees that are out with the flu this week, so.
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item that we have before you this evening is a request that we received from Ms. Pena for the installation of a disabled parking zone in front of her home at 16614 Eureka Avenue. She's requesting the zone because of limited accessible parking options in the neighborhood. Staff has inspected the site and found that neighborhood on-street parking is limited. The residence does have some off-street parking via the driveway at the rear of the property as shown in this photo here on the right. However, it is too narrow to provide ADA accessibility to a vehicle and access to the home. Staff also verified that there are no other disabled parking zones on the block, and if approved, approximately 15 feet of the curb would be marked for disabled parking only and available for use to anyone who has a valid disabled person placard. At their January meeting, the Public Works Commission recommended approval of this item, and a notice indicating that the council would hear this item this evening was also sent to all the properties on Eureka from Harrison to 70th Street. It is recommended that the city council approve the request for installation, and that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Lemons, second by Hoffmeyer to approve the request for the installation of the disabled parking zone from 16614 Eureka Avenue. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six, authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Paramount and the Institute for Local Government for participation in the Boost Program. We have a staff report, please.
Yes, sir. An agency within the League of California Cities that we belong to, there's an agency within there called the Institute for Local Government, and they have appointed us to be part of a new state-funded pilot program called the Boost Program, and we'll hear a little more about what Boost stands for and what's involvement. But in a nutshell, it's all tied to our sustainability efforts. We're very flattered to be chosen to be in this program. Out of the 400-plus cities in the state of California, we were among the 11 cities that were picked to be a part of this program, and as you'll also hear, we're the only city chosen in LA County, so quite an honor. So with that, I'll turn it over once again to our Assistant Director of Public Works, Ms. Sarah Ho. Sarah?
Thank you, John. In 2018, the California Legislature appropriated cap and trade funding to support the Strategic Growth Council's Pilot Program, which was later launched along with the Institute for Local Government, or ILG. This pilot program is called Boost, which stands for Build, Organize, Optimize, Strengthen, and Transform. Boost is a one-time pilot program that runs from March 2019 through December of 2020. The ILG approached the city of Paramount to participate in this program based on our disadvantaged community status, our staff capacity challenges, but most of all for the work that we've already done in recent years on the sustainability front and the desire to continue to work on climate-related issues. Paramount has received the Beacon Award in Sustainability Best Practices for two consecutive years and has achieved City USA status. The ILG was limited in the number of cities that could participate in the Boost Program as they were selecting cities throughout the entire state. As John said before, we're really excited to say that Paramount was the only city that was selected from the Gateway Cog Region and, in fact, the only city in LA County to be chosen to participate in this program. Program participants are required to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the ILG. This MOU will establish a framework for the program, which includes assistance with promoting the city's efforts to become more sustainable, including assistance with, oh, I'm sorry, supporting identifying and developing competitive grant applications, as well as utilizing the services of a free Civic Spark Fellow who will be part-time and will work on energy efficiency projects. In addition, the ILG has proposed to provide $20,000 to help fund technical experts that can assist in a climate action planning process, and have also agreed to provide their staff as needed to assist with this. Although this program doesn't require any financial contribution from the participating local agency, ILG has requested a contribution of $10,000 from the city in addition to city staff time in order to engage in the partnership that will lead to the development of a successful climate action plan for the city of Paramount. If approved tonight, adjustments will be made during the mid-year budget process to accommodate our contribution. It is recommended that the city council approve the memorandum of, excuse me, the memorandum of understanding with the Institute for Local Government to participate in the Boost Program. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions? Done? Move the item?
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, second by Lemons to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Institute for Local Government to participate in the Boost Program. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven, receiving file of Senate Bill 50, Housing Update.
Yes, sir. The next two items that you'll hear tonight deal with the housing issue in California. The first item is an update on Senate Bill 50. As you may recall, SB 50 was originally introduced last year by Senator Scott Weiner of San Francisco and then shelved. Earlier this month, Senator Weiner brought it back, and he made some amendments. However, even with amendments, the bill definitely still impacts local land use decision-making. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Director of Planning, Mr. John King, who will handle the item in place of the ill John Carver, who's out with the flu as well.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor Hanson and council members. So this is an update on Senate Bill 50, and we did do a review, I believe it was May of last year. So it's further along, as John mentioned. And just a little background, this is a similar slide to what you reviewed last year. We're all familiar, this is a, one of the biggest housing crises that we've ever seen. It's a crisis of affordability and availability. Number of reasons, we could do a whole presentation on each one of these, shortage of units, we have overcrowding, loss of units due to disaster and other reasons. It's, fortunately, we have a strong economy. Unemployment is at historically low levels, but that means, while income is going up to some extent, it's not keeping up with the comparable rise of housing costs. We have some inequality, some gaps, and a lot of that may be due to tech jobs and some housing submarkets kind of skewing the market. This exists to December of 2018, so in the state, in their efforts to address this crisis, the previous governor, Brown, passed the previous year 16 bills, housing bills, and the new governor, Newsom, was on track to pass 17 to top Governor Brown. Scott Weiner introduced SB 50. Now, well, as well-intentioned as this is to address the crisis by compelling housing construction, by overriding local zoning regulations, it's very serious. We have very deep concerns, as you know. So you reviewed it in May, May 7, and about a week later, Senate Appropriations Chair Anthony Pornatino held the bill for the year, and basically it was just kind of percolating over the last few months. The senator toured the local area and was reached, has been reaching out to different individuals and organizations to gain support. So into the details of the bill, it's very complex, as is with most state legislation, but it really boils down to two elements, and the first is what they're calling transit-rich housing. So that requires all cities to approve for properties within a half-mile of a rail stop or also a high-frequency bus route. So a rail stop in Paramount, you can look to the upcoming West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Station at Paramount and Rosecrans, so that's right in the center of Paramount, and also just outside of Paramount at the proposed, or upcoming, Green Line Transfer Station. That's in South Gate, but it's right at the border of Paramount. So any residentially-zoned property within that half-mile would, a city would have to approve proposals up to 55 feet, and I'll get into some details on the area and the development requirements. Separate provision, this is separate from that. What happened was another bill got folded into SB 50 for political reasons, and that requires cities to approve houses citywide to be divided into four housing units. So this really does away with the concept of single-family housing. Here's a map. So you can see the, these two circles, and these circles represent the half-mile radius from each of the two upcoming train stations that will be coming. So the bottom one there, that's by the swap meet, that's at the intersection of Paramount and Rosecrans. So we all know this is coming. It's going to be constructed very soon, before we know it, and will be, the idea is to have it active by 2028. So you can see the ring around there, this includes a lot of residential area. It does include the swap meet, but mostly what you see there is either orange or yellow. Yellow is a single-family residential. You'll see streets like Orlando, Quimby Ackley, El Bergen, Will Barn. And if you look at the other ring, you see streets we're familiar with, like Happy, Rude, Mendy, Lionel, and even upwards to the northwest portion of Paramount, Walnut, Lugo, Cortland. So this covers a lot of area, and if you think about it, the city is just short of five square miles. So if you look at this, this really is about 20% of all of Paramount, one in five, basically one, yeah, 20% of the land and most of the residential area. So what does it do? So here's some of the details. In terms of density, it's a huge change. It would strip away any limits to density. What we have now, we have a number of different density rules for different parts of town. Bottom line is, right now, we're, our density is capped at 22 homes per acre. That would go away altogether. Now, in terms of height, we have 25-foot and a 30-foot height limit, depends on where you're looking at. So that would go away as well to 45 or 55 feet, depending on where you are in those rings we saw. Parking, we, we all know, everyone knows, parking is a serious issue here throughout the city. Right now, we require at least a two-car garage and usually a driveway space in single-family areas. We require a two-car garage and a guest parking stall in our medium-density zones, and similar in our multiple-family zones. That all goes away with this bill, strips it down to half, what they're calling half a parking stall per housing unit. So two, say apartment units would only require one, one parking space. You might remember this view, this was a graphic, a housing development rendering superimposed on a real street. So this is, you can see, this is facade avenues, it's just a shot from Google, Google Street View. So kind of something to anticipate if this, if this passes. As John Moreau mentioned, it's back. It came back in early January. Senator Weiner reintroduced SB 50 with amendments, and the purpose of those amendments was to gain support. So reaching out to the minority party, the minority party politicians, he's been very successful in gaining some traction and gaining their support, and organizations, housing affordability organizations throughout the state. He's also included a, what is termed a local flexibility plan, and it's very loosely defined, it's very vague, there's no definition, and what the idea for that is to, in theory, so to not have the development in those, let's call them the circles, the half-mile from stations, to spread that out more so throughout a city, but in the end, it would have to be the same net gain from this SB bill plan. Again, it's getting more acceptance as we speak every day. Number of concerns, yes, so it's very vague, and as we know, this undermines just traditional local land use processes, and the, basically the compact between the state and local government really turns it upside down. Does not, really, it does not address the affordability crisis. It really is a giveaway to developers, so it's, it's a supply-side, kind of a trickle-down type of housing solution. So you build it, and, and if you think about it, there's a lot of evidence that you build these type of developments near train stations, it goes, those areas get gentrified, and there's a lot of displacement issues, private investors come in and, and the costs go up severely. We have a lot of infrastructure issues. We can't emphasize for, more so the parking issue. It's going to be big on parking and utilities like water and sewer. Next month, or next week, I'm sorry, we're going to come back with a, with a report on the new accessory dwelling unit law that took effect earlier this month, and there's, that's part of the problem. This bill does not reconcile the text with the newly implemented ADU law. The new ADU law requires all single-family homes for the city to approve a second unit and what they're calling a junior ADU as well. So it's very confusing at face, it looks like seven units per property, so it's from one house to seven units. Status, here's where we are now. Status, here's where we are now. So SB 50 has been fast-tracked past the Appropriations Committee to the Rules Committee, and it's likely to advance to the Senate floor before the deadline at the end of this month. If approved by the Senate, which is likely, we don't know for sure, but it's looking more likely, it will go to the Assembly for their consideration and on to the governor's desk. The city has formally opposed this bill by letter, face-to-face, in January, and today, the mayor submitted another letter of opposition, hard copy and email, so it's, time is of the essence, it's there. We do have some future opportunities to formally oppose and provide constructive criticism and suggestions, as we've done. So this is a receive-and-file report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Comments?
I don't have any question, Mr. Mayor, but I do want to comment that when we met with the legislators recently, the attitude was very much that they intend to pass this. They had a lot of opposition from all the cities, it didn't really seem to matter. We have this two-year break in order to come up with suggestions and plans, but without exception, those that spoke to us basically said, bite the bullet, it's going to happen, so figure out a way to make it work in your community.
I think we have parking issues now. Okay, no further questions or comments? Motion would be in order then?
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Lemon, second by Hoffmeyer to receive and file Senate Bill 50 Housing Update. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Item eight, another receiving file, Gateway Cities Cog Housing Proposal. We have staff report.
Yes, sir. I'm going to handle this item. So as we just heard, the state of California is in a housing crisis, and as a result, a lot of legislation is coming out of Sacramento, as you just heard once again, that force cities to produce housing rather than incentivizing them to develop housing. So many of the housing bills coming out of Sacramento are short-sighted, though, in that they fail to look at the true cost for a city to provide services to all the new residents whenever housing is built. So whenever you have a large-scale housing developments that are constructed, there's rarely a discussion of the costs involved to provide vital community services such as sewer, water, police services, road maintenance, parks, things of that nature. So coupled with this, since the passage of Prop 13 in 1978, cities are very limited on producing property tax revenue. So we just can't. In fact, many gateway cities are what's called no-low property tax cities, that barely get very little cents on the dollar for property tax. And with that, if I may have Danny pull up a slide real quick that I want to share with you that shows this. So this is a list of the gateway cities, and it shows you how much the gateway cities get on the dollar. So for every profit, so let's look obviously at Paramount, so Danny, if you can kind of highlight where Paramount is. So for every dollar that a property tax owner pays, for every $1, the city gets six cents on the dollar. So that's not a lot. So you have housing development that comes in, and we get six cents on the dollar paid to provide services. Obviously, we have other funding sources like sales tax and things like that, but if you're talking about development-related, this is how much we get on the dollar. So as a result, cities have largely become dependent on sales tax and revenue to provide these vital type of community services. This over-dependence on sales tax revenue has resulted in the excessive development over the years of commercial properties over new housing. I mean, let's just face it, if you're struggling for money, you're going to go where the money is. Now, as businesses, however, are increasingly selling their products online instead of in retail stores, many cities have struggling retail centers, and this is where the proposal comes in. So there's a proposal that's being floated by the Gateway Council of Governments that creates an opportunity for cities to revitalize their underperforming commercially-zoned properties into new housing developments. So to assist in this housing revitalization effort and to pay for those core community services to the housing's new residents, a funding methodology has been proposed to financially incentivize cities who are willing to modify their general plans, their zoning maps and development codes, to facilitate new housing construction on underperforming office, industrial, and commercial sites. So the idea would be to establish a pilot program in the Gateway Cities region to examine the benefits and financial impacts of a program that uses financial incentives within these communities that develop things like transit-oriented housing, mixed-use housing, and standalone residential infill housing. The financial incentive is this: if a city rezones a commercial property to residential and a residential development occurs at that site, the city receives the property tax, 100% of the property tax revenue that would be generated from this project. Now, there is a limitation to that. To assure that this program only has a minimal financial impact on other taxing entities like the county and the school districts, there would be a 2% cap placed on the total number of newly-formed parcels that would be authorized to participate in this program. So for example, if a community has a total of 20,000 parcels, the maximum number of newly-formed parcels that could have the property tax revenue diverted to the city for new housing would be 400 parcels. So of the 20,000, 2% of that is 400 parcels. So I've been part of the conversations about this proposal with the Gateway Cog, conversations that we've had with staff members from the governor's office, Speaker Rendon's office, and staff members from other legislators' offices, and it's been largely met with enthusiasm. They're, believe it or not, are looking for things that would help to create more housing. And as of last week, Senator Ian Calderon has agreed to have his office draft this proposal into language for a formal bill. So we'll see where this goes from here. Hopefully, they'll have a sponsor for it. So it's looking very hopeful, but again, they're asking for proposals like this, so this could definitely lead to that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this proposal.
Questions? None?
Where about in Paramount, is there a place that you might do this?
Well, as of right now, a lot of our commercial strip centers are leased up, so there may not be incentives for anybody to do it. However, when the economy takes a downturn, we could have a lot of vacancy. So for example, there is a strip center on Paramount Boulevard just south of the 105, across the street from the little A-Large apartment complex. If, in the near future, if this legislation passes, that could possibly be one, if there is a recession and they have a lot of vacancy and they need help. Well, this could be something that we could look at. We could have a mixed-use, where you still keep the commercial on the bottom, and then we put the residential on top. So that's one idea of a location, that it could work.
There was a period of time it was vacant.
Yes, it was, absolutely, back in the recession, for sure.
Further questions?
Move the item.
Moved by Lemon, second by Olmos to receive and file this report, Gateway Cities Cog Housing Proposal. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Item number nine, proposed 2020 special, city special events and holiday event schedule. Staff report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, this is a fun one, this is good news after all the news of housing crunch and crime. We are presenting to you our city special events and holiday event schedule for the year of 2020. These are proposed events, so we'd like you to take a real hard look at this so we can start planning for, believe it or not, we have to do some of our planning early on. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Services and Recreation Director, Dave Johnson, who will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, council members, as John mentioned, we're going to go over all our events. This is the breadth and scope of all our events for the 2020 calendar year. So these are all events that you're all very familiar with. They fill up two pages here, we got on both sides, and it goes on to this page. So these are all the ones that we do annually, they're the ones loved by our community, and we will continue to do those. So you have in your staff report, obviously, all the dates for all these events, so make sure to tape that up on your refrigerator. But we also conduct several city cosponsored events, so there's agencies that we work with. Of those agencies, we work with the Friends and Library, Topeka Sister Cities, local churches, the Elks Lodge, Latina Art Foundation, and Siaka to conduct various events for their purposes. Now, new this year, a new city event that council approved in the budget was the Paramount Youth Sports Hall of Fame. So you have this event coming up, it'll be in March. We received, I believe, 49 applications for awardees, and we did put together a diverse committee to review those awardees. They'll be meeting February 12th, that'll be Selection Day. Immediately after that, they make their selections, we'll notify the awardees, and then on March 14th, that's when the awardees will be asked to attend a banquet so they can receive their recognition and honor from the city council. New proposed events that we'll be looking at for the next budget or for this 2020 calendar year, but will show up in your next budget cycle. These are projects that we're trying to work with, different agencies, to see if we can make happen. We're looking at a back-to-school event that we'd work with local groups, churches, maybe a medical office, a medical group, the YMCA, to provide some kind of item that we can give all the kids headed back to school. You know, it could be a jacket, it could be a backpack, it could be shoes. So we're going to be working where we can to try to see if we can make that event happen. And then we're looking at a possible shop local holiday kickoff event, again, trying to draw attention into our downtown, draw shoppers into our downtown, go shop Paramount, you know, use great sales tax. So there's, I think it's on November 28th, that is the National Shop Local Day. We would look to work with the Chamber of Commerce to see if we can put together an event to try to draw folks into the downtown to kick off that shopping holiday season. Our summer concert series, oh, we have a couple, we have a suggestion here to change this a little bit. My photo cut off the last letter of Market. On that summer concert series, so we typically, we've done this for six years, we go from, in this year, we're proposing go from July 2nd to August 6th. Traditionally, we have held these now for the last three years at Progress Park on Thursdays. We're recommending this year that we conduct four at Progress Park, but take two of them and move them to the Friday Night Market. The idea here is that we can reach a larger audience at the Friday Night Market, it will add a boost to the Friday Night Market. In talking to the operator that runs the markets, actually, summers seem to be the slower times for that market, which, because obviously, folks have more choices. So we're hoping that putting two of the concerts at the Friday Night Market will assist that market, and again, will help us reach a larger audience. And then we're going to go over the various genres of music that we're proposing. Going to kick off the summer with a country band, and, can you hit the music? There you go. Give a quick little snippet. Now, this group appeared at the summer concerts about two years ago. So we'll follow that up with a concert that July 10th, this will be the first one that goes to the Friday Night Market. Now, this group actually performed at the Heritage Event last year, they're on the second If you didn't see it at the Heritage, this guy looked and sounded like Jagger. And then we go back to Progress Park for Banda Las Angelinas. Now, this group also played at the Friday Night Market, that's where we found them. Staying at Progress, now, this is the group that played at this year's tree lighting, and everybody had a great time, so it's cumbia style. And still staying at Progress Park, Mariachi Las Colibres. And then we ended August 7th back at the Friday Night Market with the Echo Park Project, So as you see, we have a variety of music, and if you can't come to our concerts and find some way to shake a hip and break your hip, you're missing out, because we have a whole different variety, and it's all exciting, it's got a lot of dance style to it. So if you've been to our summer concerts, you see people just kind of randomly break out and dancing, kind of like they did at the tree lighting, that's what we hope to see happen. Friday Night Market, so again, we're planning for the whole calendar year, we have these markets laid out, they are advertised as the first Friday of each month, we're going to say ish, because when we looked at the calendar, we saw some conflict. So what we're looking at doing is, it's first Friday of every month except for May, we're going to move it to the second Friday, because the first Friday is when our Lady of the Rosary has their fiesta, so we don't want that to be in conflict. June, we're just rolling it into our Heritage Festival, so it won't be that Friday, it'll be that first Saturday, which is the date of the Heritage Festival. July, it is July 3rd, so that's way too close to the 4th of July, so we're going to move that again to the second Friday of the month. And December, like we did this year, we will roll into the Breakfast with Santa event. And then, as we did last year, we held a Night Under the Hay Tree event, we designed this as a cultural arcs event. We're planning to do two this year, again, drawing people into our downtown. We did last year, we did a flamenco, and that was very positively received. This year, what we're hoping to do for August 21st, we're looking for introducing Irish music, and the, like we did with the flamenco, we'll have the appropriate alcoholic beverages for adults related to, maybe we'll have something related to Irish beer. And then September 25th, which is in the period of, what's it called? Oktoberfest, thank you. So we're looking at a German Oompa Bob amp to enjoy that, and again, we'll have appropriate food and drink associated with that culture. Veteran celebration, so we've done this for two years now. The first year, we did it on a Saturday, we did it as a breakfast event, and this, last year, we did it as a military ball at the gym. Now, both years, we did it prior to Veterans Day, which is on November 11th. What I found out in speaking to my wife, the Colonel, is that that first Saturday, that first weekend of the month, is when a lot of our local active military personnel drill. So if we saw that a lot of them were not able to attend, that might be the reason why they're currently drilling that weekend. So we're proposing to move the date of our veteran celebration to the Saturday after Veterans Day, which this year would occur on November 14th. We're looking, again, doing the same kind of military ball style, but hopefully, again, be able to attract more of our veterans and our active military-serving personnel. And then we finish the year, again, as we always do, with our very popular events. Our recreation staff, again, appreciates your comments and all the positive feedback we receive from city council on these events. We're hoping, again, to add a little more twist that we did this year, some of the things that we changed, we appreciated those comments, and we're looking at possibly proposing some more changes that will hopefully enhance these events as well. And that concludes my presentation. We are recommending approval or modification of the proposed dates for the city's 2020 special and holiday events. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Of course I do. Real quick, she always makes fun of me when I say, "real quick." Dave, concerts at the market, black asphalt, summer, hot, no trees, where are they going to sit? Sounds hot to me, and I think that's why we have a problem getting people to the market, because those are our hot months. But I think a lot of people during those hot months look forward to going to a park, sitting under the tree, and having some cool spots. That, to me, uh, sounds really hot, just something to think about. And then for the summer, I mean, for the holiday schedule as well, special needs stop, you know, we took a step there, and I'd like to make sure that we still have a stop for special needs, but a lot of your special needs children are the music. So if we could find a way to lower the music as we roll So if we could find a way to lower the music as we roll in, or take them into maybe Progress Park, if it's still at that stop, where it's more quiet, because it's the sound that gets them all amped up. And we went rolling in really loud at a special needs stop, so that was a little bit, so maybe, but, I mean, I think it's great that we're so inclusive. And then, with that being said, I've gotten several calls in the last month, or emails, in regards to having a special needs team of some type. Doesn't have to be anything real technical, but maybe just getting a little, so they can run as a group, and kick a soccer ball, and have individuals who, from the high school, or maybe from Cerritos College, who are looking for a career that deals with children with special needs, maybe they'd be willing to come volunteer. I know Norwalk has a really good program, and one of the residents who runs that lives here in Paramount, and I'm sure she would be more than happy to get us started on just being inclusive, you know, maybe first Saturday of every month, come out, we're gonna teach you how to kick a soccer ball, parents can get to meet each other. It's a small community, but they need to be embraced, so.
Absolutely, and if you have that number for that contact, I'd be happy to give her a call.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I think to add to Lori's thing, too, I think people aren't, don't know, like, the Latinas Art Foundation has local go dancing for those children as well. So, I mean, I think we have things, I think people just don't know.
Well, it's actually offered, I think she offers it in Downey, it's Danley Perez's mom. I've been in contact with her, I don't think she's able to do it for us right now, but we have been in conversation with her about trying to add a special needs for local dance program. So we're continuing to look for that opportunity, but.
You can bring it to Paramount, though, because a lot of times, they don't have the ability to travel to another city.
Yes.
And on the heels of Councilmember Gien's comment about that, too, Dave and I are definitely meeting with a group of parents who had expressed a need for that, so, we, yeah, we're meeting with them, and within two weeks, I believe, is when our meeting is scheduled. I came across him at the PTA Executive Board, where I gave a presentation on this, on the sales tax measure, so.
Good. Any further comments or questions?
Move approval of the calendar.
Second. Motion by Almost and second by Hoffmeyer to approve proposed dates of the city's 2020 special and holiday events. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gien?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Almost?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Comments or committee reports, council members?
Which end do you want to start on?
Start down here.
Okay, um, let's see, where do I want to start? Just a couple things. I was gonna talk about, you know, everything that we've done, but I feel it's important to address just a couple things that have occurred. Number one, our constitution provides for the First Amendment, I agree, and I'm totally behind that, and when we went from five minutes to three minutes, I pitched my, you know, fit over that, and so, you know, the First Amendment is something that's really important. However, with that being said, there's something to be said about criminal threats, something to be said about causing chaos, there's rules that apply to the First Amendment. And when somebody comes in and, to a city council meeting, and they use words like gun, and, and shooting people, you know, originally, I chalked it up to, you know, this person's upset, somebody was just hit in the crosswalk, he's upset, I get it, but then, when you come in here and say, "I know my rights," maybe, if you're watching this, maybe you don't clearly know your rights, because you do not have that right to make threats. So I want to make that clear. And, you know, and if we need to, you know, if somebody comes into a city council meeting and uses words like gun, and, and what do I have to do, shoot people, well, you know, that, that gives people, an officer reasonable suspicion, suspicion, to maybe pat a person down that's gonna come in and make those threats, to make sure they're not carrying a weapon. And I would have never said this initially, when he made that, those statements, until today, when he comes in and he says he knows his rights, but we all have rights, too, and we don't have to be threatened.
Exactly.
So, wanted to put that on the record. And then, I'll just leave it at that. I've said enough tonight.
All right, I have a couple of updates. Actually, I attended the California Contract Cities Meeting, and it was actually held at the Albert Robles Water Redistricting. Really good a meeting, and actually, information for you, John, actually, our director, our board director, Vera Robles-Dewitt, had asked if she could possibly come and give a presentation at a city council meeting, so I told her that I would share that with you. I also tended to leave a California Conference, new council member training. Three things they touched on about social media was a huge, big discussion when it comes to council and staff. They say it's been an emerging legal issues, that we really have to be careful, and that they actually stated that it's probably good that all of us go for training as council members and staff to understand what should, we should be doing and not doing on social media, what we're like texting and saying on emails. So they just brought it up, I brought the training manual with me, in case you want to see it. Thirdly, I think this is for you, John, mind-reading is rare, therefore, we need to tell staff what we want. So I know you don't always know what we think up here, but we're gonna start communicating better to you.
No, that's rude, Brenda, you can't do that. That makes you a rude person.
Stop it. And the third point was, as city council, they're, they also taught us that we should constantly be looking at age population in the city, to determine what necessities the city needs for that type of population. A good example that they gave was, like, it's called silverware, which is a senior population, which I know we do a good job, but they want us to ensure that we understand the challenges of seniors when it comes to transportation, food, housing, and that was just one of the examples of age population, but they said that we should always be looking at age demographics to make sure that we have the necessities for those residents. So I thought that was great. And I just have one question about the pick-it-up Paramount. Do we have any updates of actually how that litter abatement's actually working, because I have not really seen a change in trash in our city, so.
Looking to our Assistant Director of Public Works, sir, do you have any idea, any way to measure that? If not, we could, we could definitely look at, maybe, pounds collected, and our new trash cans that we rolled out.
You know what, I don't, I can't think of anything qualitative that I can give you right now, but give us some time to take a look into it, and see if we can come up with something.
Residents about trash, or, because I've been taking lots of pictures, because I have a big zone that people are just like dumping, and I'm, you know, calling it in and stuff, but it's like, I just want to know, how's it, it's a great program, are we just using it to its full capacity?
We'll look into it.
John, if I could add that we did have a volunteer group come to our clutter-free event.
Oh, yeah, you want to share that?
Yes, at our last clutter-free event, we did have a small group, but nonetheless, they showed up, and they were volunteers, and they were picking up trash in the area of Paramount and Howe Arthur, over by that area, and I believe they had nineteen bags of trash that they picked up. I believe that was it, more or less, but I can't get the exact amount. And I was also out there picking up trash on Paramount, so we're welcoming those groups to come into our city.
Okay. Councilmember Lemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Almost and I met with representatives from Senator Gonzalez's office to discuss them helping us to secure some property from the PUC and the utility companies to open up some parking in neighborhoods. And they were very happy with the fact that we had come up with a plan to address the concerns that they had, and we're going to carry that along with Assemblyman Brendan on our behalf and speak to them, so we're very appreciative of that. In line with what Councilmember Gien said, I'd like to state that I feel the same way. It's extremely important that people understand that free speech doesn't mean that you have the right to threaten somebody. Come to a council meeting, say that you want to bring a gun. I, too, when I spoke to the officer, said I understood that the man was emotional, I was hoping he would have had a change of attitude, obviously, he hasn't. This is actually the second time this year that I've dealt with a death threat, I was contacted by the police, too, and played an audio tape where somebody demanded my resignation, or they were going to end me. So, it's not okay. It's not okay to devolve to this point, it's not okay to put people in, in this type of position, and think that it's not threatening to them. It bothers me when they said, "Don't intimidate us, don't threaten us." Who's bullying who on social media, and who's making those horrible phone calls, or, or coming before the council and threatening to use a gun? I think it's also important to note that you can't put totally false information out on social media and expect that you don't have to have responsibility for those comments. When you do that, you put the city's staff at risk, you put the city's reputation at risk, and you have to own that and take responsibility. And we have a job as leaders to take responsibility and to set the record straight at all times, and to reach out and protect the safety of our employees. They are our responsibility, and we must always, always put their safety first. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
I got nothing, go ahead.
Nothing? Well, you know, you kind of did it on everybody, I think, I don't need to say it. Well, I will say one thing, I think we just did a letter to Edison on the possibility of some parking things, and so on and so forth. I signed that.
Correct. You signed that, yeah, so that was kind of piggybacking on what Councilmembers.
Piggybacking on what Councilmember Lemmons said.
Hopefully.
That's coming up, yeah. So hopefully, we'll get something taken care of on that.
I have nothing further, staff?
Yes, sir, I have a few. First of all, I'm sure you've heard during the roll call, we have a new city clerk. So with that, I'd like to formally introduce you to our new city clerk, Heidi Luce. Heidi comes to us as, she served as a city clerk in both the cities of Rolling Hills and Rolling Hills Estates. She has a Bachelor of Arts in Communication from Cal State Fortin. She earned her Certified Municipal Clerk certification in 2013, and is working toward her Master Municipal Clerk certification. Before joining the public sector, she spent over twenty years in the private sector, working in various capacities in customer service and marketing communication fields. In her free time, it says here, Heidi enjoys spending time with family, enjoying all sorts of outdoor activities. And a fun fact is, Heidi's first city job was as a lifeguard slash swim instructor for the city of Lakewood when she was in high school. So, I'd like to introduce Heidi.
We welcome you. Again?
Also, um, yes, I do, sir, sorry. We do have a new video to share with you that was just completed recently, and it's a video about our water system. As you know, the council directed me to develop a video, well, we were kind of working on it already, that idea, and the council said, "Yes, please move forward with that." So, this is a video about our water system, giving people confidence in the water that they drink every day. So with that, I'll turn it over to Danny.
Hello, my name is Adriana Figueroa, and I serve as your Public Works Director in the city of Paramount. Our department provides the water to your homes and businesses. It's a responsibility that we take very seriously. It's our mission to make sure that water is safe, clean, and secure. Water is essential to life. The city works nonstop to certify that your water is healthy and meets all of the rigorous water quality standards demanded by law, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. You have the right to know the truth about the safety of your water in Paramount. We are here today to share that story with you.
The following are some important facts about the water in Paramount. It comes from two sources. Groundwater pulled up by three wells in town, and a percentage bought from the Metropolitan Water District that comes up from the Central Valley and the Colorado River. This combination guarantees that there is always water available when you turn on your tap. It's the model for nearly every water system in the region. The city manages the extensive network of pipelines that connect to every home and business. These are routinely maintained and replaced as needed, usually after decades of service. By the way, the pipe going up to the edge of your property belongs to the city. From there, and into the apartment or house, it belongs to the property owner. Many state and federal health standards protect residents and safeguard your water. Paramount tests its water routinely as required by law. A third-party, state-certified lab is used to look for potential pollutants. Paramount's results dependably show that the water meets all water quality standards and is absolutely safe. You can find these results at paramountenvironment.org. Also, the city's annual consumer confidence report is posted at paramountcity.com, and consumers are sent a specific web address each year for easy access and public transparency. Everyone is encouraged to review the test results and read the report. Sometimes, there may be a reason to treat our groundwater before sending it out. Groundwater in our region, for instance, has naturally high levels of manganese, a mineral that is safe and naturally occurring in rocks and soils. The only drawback? It discolors the water, so it's filtered out. You may have heard about PFAS or PFOA in the news lately. These are chemicals causing concern in water supplies all over America, and have potential to shut down hundreds of wells in Southern California. We are going over and above to proactively, voluntarily continue testing our wells for these chemicals. Paramount Water Services staff, from operators and maintenance personnel to customer service employees, take great pride and do a fantastic job in providing everyone in the city with a safe and reliable water source.
We all drink from the same tap, and our great team of professionals are dedicated one hundred and ten percent and beyond to making sure Paramount's water is the very finest. Should you ever have any questions or concerns, please feel free to call our Public Works Department, Water Services Division, at area code five-six-two, two-two-zero, two-zero, two-zero. We'll be more than happy to help you.
The city makes all of our testing results available for your review at paramountenvironment.org, on the page devoted to water.
Okay, we, good, I'm.
She did a great job.
She did, yeah, yeah, she really did, I hope you like that. I wanted to also share with you, real quick, a snippet of the Spanish version, so this is the advantage of having somebody on staff in Public Works that speaks Spanish. Go ahead, go Danny.
Hola, me llamo Adriana Figueroa, y soy la directora de obras públicas en la ciudad de Paramount. Nuestro departamento suministra el agua que reciben en sus casas y empresas. Tomamos en serio esta gran responsabilidad.
Okay, so that was just a snippet, once again, of this, of the Spanish version, so she was able to do both English and Spanish. I just wanted to note a couple of committed staff members that worked really late into the night recently. Thursday night, as I mentioned to the council by text, because our email was down, our whole servers were down, two of our, our IT people worked past twelve-thirty that night, so they put in a lot of hours to get us up and running on Friday, and in time to get your agendas delivered to you, because we didn't have access to the server to print out the agendas. So, we are definitely looking into that to make sure that it doesn't happen again, but as we, and this is the first time it's ever happened this, this way. And also, two staff members from our Public Safety Department were also here till twelve-thirty at night on Thursday, helping with the homeless count, that's Adriana Figueroa and Steve, Steve Camperulio, so they really did a bang-up job. I shared with you an incident that happened during the count. As you know, there are volunteers that come from all over the county to help out with the count. So they had three or four volunteers from the city of Hermosa Beach, or Renado Beach, I believe, somewhere around.
I think it was Hermosa Beach, or Manhattan Beach.
Manhattan Beach.
One of the beach cities.
Yeah, one of the beach cities. They just came out to help out with the county, and they were assigned to Paramount, so they came back in with their count of Paramount, and they counted twenty RVs in Paramount, in just one area of Paramount. And Adriana said, "Well, that sounds kind of fishy, there's something wrong there." So we have an aggressive stance towards overnight RV parking. So Adriana checked with the county person and said, "Hey, is there any way we can go back out to that area, just to double-check that?" And so the county persons agreed to it. They went out, and they only found three, the other seventeen RVs were just across our border in Long Beach. So the key with that is that each, when they do these counts, they assign three to five people.
Correct.
In each RV. So they just drive by, they don't knock and count individual people, they make an assumption that there are three to five homeless people that are living in that RV. So if that count would have stayed on our record, we would have had a fifty-one extra people to our count. So, that was a good save that, to make it clear, but that's just one of the flaws that we see with this homeless count.
But, John, the homeless people don't realize there's a barrier that says, "Oops, I can't cross over," so at any given moment, they can walk from here to there, and they are our homeless. RVs are parked in Long Beach, but they're still our, part of our homeless, you know?
Sure, but what they look for, what they try, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adrian, what they try and look for is a snapshot of how many homeless do you have living in your town at that, at that given time? So, once they did Long Beach, the question would become, are they double-counted then? Is the county's count inflated higher? So that's why.
Information accurate, yeah.
Yeah, so it's kind of important to get that accuracy. The last thing that I wanted to bring up, that was mentioned earlier, you know, as your bosses, as, I'm sorry, as my bosses, you are entitled to know that I am not in any way trying to prevent free speech. I am not in any way trying to prevent free speech, trying to inhibit somebody's freedom of speech. It was made in two occasions during public comment period tonight. In fact, one of the comments by Mr. Yanis was that a letter went out and in fact, it did. I shared that with the council back in October. And that was in recent, and as he said, in response to some social media postings that Mr. Yanis had done in regards to comments that he made that were profanity laced and that were very derogatory to one of our employees. And I have an obligation, just as, as the council does, to protect our employees, whether it be on social media, in person or anything like that. So I will put another copy of the letter just to refresh your memory, to reassure you that in no way that are, we are trying to inhibit anyone's free speech. The letter was simply saying that that's, that type of language is uncalled for and we hope it, it does not happen again. I will continue to take that stance unless I'm directed by this council. I think it's important. Our employees work very hard and I will stand up for them. So with that.
Okay, we're going into closed session, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1. But before we do, because as we normally do, I'm sure most of the, well, maybe most of the audience will be gone by the time that we come out of closed session. So I just want to announce that at that point, I am going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Kobe and Gigi Bryant and the other people who were tragically killed in the incident on Sunday morning. But I can't do that as of yet because we have to go in closed session, just so you all know that that's what we're going to do. Okay. Closed session.
Excuse me, John. Did you want me to go over the fireworks survey?
One more thing under comments from staff. Thank you, Adriana. I'm so sorry. There was a.
I could make a comment on that too, if I could.
Sure.
I know we have a lot of Adrianas here that work in our city.
And Johns.
And I know you made just a little mistake there because it was actually Adriana Lopez, not.
Did I say Figueroa?
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Well, thank you for the correction, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not trying to make any problems here. I just, I know we have a lot of Adrianas, so.
This will take 30 seconds. At the last council meeting, there was a question about how many of the cities that we showed actually allow fireworks and which ones don't. So Adriana has a real quick chart to show you, just so we wanted to make sure that you're aware.
Thank you, John. And I think he does that on purpose. So when he says Adriana, we all show up.
You all show up. There you go. Okay.
Okay. This is in regards to your question, Councilwoman Gian, in regards to the cities that we surveyed. I took the opportunity to call the cities and determine if they allowed Safe and Saint. I think our last presentation, it was just what their fine amount was. I was happy to see that the majority of the cities that we surveyed do allow Safe and Saint. It would only be Diamond Bar and Whittier that do not. Everybody else does.
More than I thought. Wow.
And that was the only follow-up to the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
In the back, hold on. Thank you.
The city council did authorize or did conduct a duly authorized closed session, at which time there is no reportable action to be presented tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. And as I said before we went in, this meeting is adjourned in memory of Kobe and Gigi Bryant and the other people who were sadly killed in a helicopter crash this past Sunday. We're adjourned to February 4th at 6:00 PM.